Good afternoon. This special meeting of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. As a reminder, members of press and members of the public in attendance, we're asking that everyone wears a mask while in chambers. We also ask that you silence any electronic devices that you have with you today. We're going right into business of the day. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would ask the clerk to call members.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Communications from the mayor can be found on page two of the agenda. We'll now move to bills on second reader. Before we do, I would like to recognize Chairman Costello. Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without objection, we will be in short titles for the duration of the meeting. Hearing and seeing none, we are in short titles for the remainder of the meeting. Mr. Clerk, if you could read in our first bill on second reader.
City Council Bill 22-0235, Ordinance of Estimates for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30th, 2023.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Chair of the Committee, Chairman Costello. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may have one moment of personal privilege.
Definitely.
Thank you. Mr. President and colleagues, we held 83 hours of hearings with 45 different agencies and entities over a multiple-week period. Mr. President, I want to thank you for your leadership. I want to thank my colleagues on the Ways and Means Committee, specifically Councilwoman McCray, Councilmember Burnett, Council Vice President Middleton, Councilman Stokes, and Councilman Dorsey, and Councilman Schleifer, and really want to thank all of the members of the council for being so engaged throughout this entire process. I want to thank Mayor Scott, members of his team, specifically Chief of Staff Michael Huber, Natasha Meehu, Nina Themelis, and Sophia G. for being in chambers with us and working so closely with the council the entire time. I also want to specifically thank City Administrator Chris Shorter, who was probably in here for about 85 or 90% of these budget hearings, and all the agency heads and personnel who took these hearings seriously throughout this process. Jose Achu and Larry Green from your staff were incredible, Mr. President. Sebastian Sadie from my office, Nate Poole from your office, Mr. President, and want to thank Matt Peters, who filled in a couple times for the committee as staff. And finally, two last thank yous. One goes to your Chief of Staff Lawrence Anderson and Matt Stegman, who were...
Who's Matt?
Matt Stegman? Did I say his name right? Lawrence Anderson and Matt Stegman were nothing short of phenomenal during this process. I look forward to not speaking with them tomorrow because I've been on the phone with them 22 times a day for the last month. And finally, Mr. President, I ask you and my colleagues to stand and thank Marguerite Curran, staff to the committee, who was absolutely... Thank you, Mr. President, and the bill has been read in, 22-0235.
It's been read in, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are... There is one set of amendments that the committee passed, Mr. President. I moved the... The amendments are on my colleague's desk. These are related to BOPA, a cut in the amount of $196,000. I would like to point out that Councilman Torrance will be introducing a city council resolution on Monday, which will explain the intention of that action, the conditions that are expected of the council, and that there would be support for a supplemental appropriation to restore that funding during this upcoming fiscal year should those conditions be met. Mr. President, I move the committee amendments.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the committee amendments are accepted. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe that one of my colleagues has a floor amendment that is also on the member's desk. I would defer to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would the gentlewoman or gentleman with the amendment, please stand. Gentlewoman from 14th District, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues, and thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for the opportunity to present this amendment. It is all on your desks. This amendment reduces the general fund allocation from the Sheriff's Office, service numbers 882 and 884, by $500,000 total between the two, which represents a surplus they had in their budget. In a hearing on January 25th and during the budget hearings, members of this body, including myself, brought up several concerns we have with the way the Sheriff's Office conducts evictions. It is their job to post failure to pay rent notices, eviction notices, and other correspondence, and to carry out the evictions once the court has granted the landlord the eviction. It is not a fun job, I am sure. Members of this council and I have had concerns that the Sheriff's Office does not post the notices on residents' doors but on the property or common area, which means many renters could potentially miss, and many do, missed court dates. Members of this council, including me, have had concerns that the Sheriff's Office does not provide eviction dates to renters when they call, even though the list is sent to organizations that help renters and they provide it to landlords. Members of this council, including me, have concerns about the Sheriff's Office performing evictions when the property is not properly licensed and should not be rented anyway. This cut sends a message to the Sheriff Office that we expect to see improvements in these three areas over the coming fiscal year. This entire council has taken action to reduce evictions in... Throughout the last few months that I've been on the council, this action is consistent with what we've done before. There will also be a resolution introduced on Monday with these expectations so that it is super clear to the Sheriff's Office. I look forward to the progress and communication with the Sheriff throughout this fiscal year, and I pledge to assist in any way possible. We're working with the mayor's office, who will introduce supplemental, which will move these funds or add these funds to assist renters to avoid eviction. Thank you to my colleagues for their support of this effort. I move the amendment.
It's been moved and properly seconded. We're going to do a roll call. Roll call.
President Mosby.
Before I say my vote, I would like to address the amendment on the floor in front of us. The eviction situation is something that the city of Baltimore definitely should improve and has to continue to improve, but I am deeply concerned about this body taking this action at this particular time, for a multitude of reasons. I think the councilwoman from 14th District raises really valid concerns about the effectiveness and us developing ways to drive a better product for the citizens of Baltimore. I think when we talk about the fact that we've sat here, many of you, for close to 100 hours in testimony, what I had said is probably one of the more substantive dialogues between this council and the administration and agencies. I think there's been a host of issues and concerns and inefficiencies that we've been able to identify. Yet, this council, like councils of the past, has never really taken a bold action utilizing its autonomy to really go after and leverage this process in a way that drives a better product out of our agencies. What we've decided to do today, and what we're doing today, is going after two independent agencies, agencies that do not fall as departments or agencies under the administration, and we're literally cutting out a total of $800,000 out of a $3 billion budget with this idea of effectuating change for our residents. How I understand that, and I'm totally supportive of it, I think that there was a tremendous amount of opportunity for us to also develop effective changes and drive better products and better outcomes for our constituents in much more substantive things that affect them on their daily lives, when we talk about the crime, when we talk about the grime, when we talk about the issues that have been plaguing our city for far too long. So how I do understand the motivation of this particular measure, I do not like it on the surface of it being politics, nor do I not like it... Not saying that that's the motivation of anybody's vote or even the sponsor, but we are in a political season. This is a political office. Nor do I like the fact that we did not take the same approach with other agencies that could have tackled real severe issues of residents in the city of Baltimore. In short, I see this as performative. I think it's great for headlines, but I don't know if it drives the needle in the right direction and the chance that we had to do on this body and this floor with the close to 100 hours of testimony that we were able to receive. So with that to the council, I am voting no.
Cohen.
End my vote, please.
Yes, you have the floor.
Thank you. Mr. President and colleagues, I have enormous respect for the women and men and folks of the Sheriff's Department. I've seen them in action, and they are just a workforce that is largely of Baltimore, from Baltimore, and works extremely hard for Baltimore. However, I do feel that the concerns my colleague raised are valid around the eviction process. We know that eviction is one of the most traumatizing actions that anyone can endure, and so the idea of not being properly served notices is extremely concerning. Additionally, I'm concerned that leadership of the Sheriff's Department has not been engaged enough in the fight against violent crime. We know that violence is driving so many of the ills in our city, and we want to see a Sheriff's Department that is fully out there and engaged in that work. Again, it is my hope that we, as a body, as a city council, can continue to support reform and change within the department that leads to a better eviction process and also leads to sheriffs being more engaged in patrol, as they have been at times in my district and in other districts, want to see them out there. So I vote yes.
Thank you.
McCray.
Council President, I would like to explain my vote.
Yes, please stand.
I wasn't going to explain my vote, but I feel that I need to at this time. This is the only public safety agency or agency dealing with public safety that we are putting forth a cut for. That includes BPD, no cut. State's Attorney's Office, no cut. Monty, no cut. Circuit Courts, no cut. I could go on and on. The council president said it very clearly. There are multiple agencies across Baltimore City that have inefficiencies, and we are not putting forth this cut. This floor amendment reeks... Reeks of political posturing. My vote is no.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Dorsey.
First of all, I'm really proud of the work that we did in here and the opportunity that we gave to the Sheriff's Office to come before the council, and I thank the chair for ensuring that they did eventually come before the council. I'm also proud of the work that we did at the very beginning of this year in January when we had open dialogue with the Sheriff's Office that made clear that we were of the understanding of how evictions are supposed to take place, per the Code of the State of Maryland and the Attorney General's opinion that affirms our understanding of the way that evictions are to be conducted by the Sheriff's Office. I was disappointed to have them come back before us five months later and again have them say they believe that we're wrong, so they're going to continue doing things in a way that does not comply with what I believe the state of Maryland says is the process by which evictions are to be conducted. Were that not the case, we would perhaps not be here, but we are, and I am very happy to see an agreement with the mayor's office to have this money go to... Right to counsel for tenants. In virtually all cases, nearly 100% of the time, landlords are represented in court when seeking to repossess property and evict tenants. And in almost as many cases, those tenants are not represented. It's more than 90% of the time, tenants are not represented. Right to counsel is an extremely important policy for us to enact, and I'm glad that we have this opportunity to put money there. And I'm sorry that it comes at the expense of having to express a disappointment with the Sheriff's Office for not doing better, taking every available opportunity to make sure that tenants have a fair shake, a fair opportunity to have their day in court in the first place. At the end of the day, what we're talking about is a failure to notify tenants of a court date so they can show up and represent themselves, and hopefully, hopefully, the Sheriff's Office will reconsider and start doing a better job of notifying tenants of failure to pay rent and eviction court dates so that they can show up and that with this agreement that we have here, that those tenants will also have representation when they show up for those days in court. I'm proud to vote yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Conway.
I guess I have to explain my vote, too. You know, I... This is a tough one. Probably one of the toughest votes that I've had to make thus far, and I'll say because there are a lot of things at play that I learned in the course of the budget hearing that are very valid concerns, questions that I brought up myself and asked directly of the sheriff. What we're dealing with here are people's homes. I don't think anybody here has been homeless. I hope not, and if they have, I think they would have a good sense of how important it is not to be evicted unjustly. The concerns brought forward by Councilwoman Ramos about notification, about... One of the questions that she brought up and I followed up on was regards... With regards to rental licenses, making sure that folks that are renting these homes out are doing their due diligence and getting the license that they're required to by law, and what role the Sheriff's Department has in checking that. I think there are some serious gaping holes here. I'm also very cognizant that this is an election season, and this can be perceived as political. And any of my colleagues will tell you, I don't want this to be that kind of decision. But I also realize we have... We have a responsibility. We have a power that is unique. We are elected to make decisions exactly like this. This is our job, and this is a power, one of our probably most useful and important that we can consider. I'll tell you, as I was listening to the council president speak, as I was listening to my colleagues speak, I fully appreciate the concerns brought forward about the political nature of... Or at least the perception of that, of this cut. But I always think back to myself, if I were put in this situation and I were evicted, I would hope, I would hope, 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 hope that our leadership is doing everything in their power to make sure that when that does happen, we are checking under every rock to make sure that we are doing so justfully. And if there are instances in which notification is not proper and the checking of a rental license is not done, I understand that it can be pretty complicated, but I would have hoped to have seen some progress on that during the hearing that we had yesterday. So to that effect, I'm going to vote yes, and you know, I hope that this results in some significant change going forward and a partnership, hopefully with the Sheriff to resolve these issues. Thank you, Mr. President.
Schleifer. Middleton.
First of all, I support my colleague, my council president, and also the councilperson of the 2nd District. And if anyone knows anything about what I see in evictions around the city, just go back to the Security Positiv Relief Act and how I had to do a second round of getting that bill basically passed, changing it around and so on to help people remain in their homes, especially renters. I'm a member of the committee and also attended the share... Both of the meetings for the sheriff, and it was clearly stated, and I'll restate it, that you know, the sheriff is under the jurisdiction of the court system, and things that the council would like changed, we need to have dialogue with the General Assembly and to... And as I sit and listen to some of the yes votes, it still does not resonate with me why we want to go through with this and put this much pressure on the sheriff's... On the sheriff's office when we clearly have not put this... Didn't put this kind of pressure on the police department or any other agency. So it is showing some, you know, it's just showing things that I'm... I don't... I think is wrong. The sheriff clearly stated that he would work with this council to help make changes to... For this one issue. The Sheriff's Department does many, many things with the staff that they have, and they are no way the power of the Baltimore City Police Department either. So it's just, again, my vote is a no.
Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I stand as one of the members of this council who was formerly homeless. I stand because I agree with the sheriff. He is under the jurisdiction of the court. I understand the Attorney General's opinion because of my legal training, but one thing I cannot look past is an opportunity to fund... An opportunity to fund the right to counsel in Baltimore City, to prevent people from being put out on the streets when a landlord did not follow through in getting a license. I understand the sheriff has a million-dollar surplus. At this time, we have an opportunity to fund... An opportunity to fund... A chance for persons to have hope when someone does not have adequate heat. The windows cannot close. They have no air conditioning, and they did not know about the court processes. We have an opportunity to set the ship right for some of our most vulnerable Baltimoreans, and I cannot skip that opportunity. So I vote yes.
Burnett.
I'd like to explain my vote, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
When I'd like to thank you, Councilmember Torrance, for your vulnerability and sharing that. I think us as elected officials, we have a variety of responsibilities. One of them is to stand up for our constituents and using the power that we do have. I'll remind this body that while it may not have been or may not be the tradition of the body to exercise the power to cut and reallocate, the power's there, and if there are other issues that we care passionately about, whether those are recycling or police oversight or the Department of Transportation or infrastructure, we should be doing more of this, in my opinion. Not less of it. I'm one of the people that would have liked to see more of this in the five years I've been in office, but the political will hasn't been there, to be frank. And so my hope is that this sets precedent, that this body will do what we were elected to do, and that is to hold the administration accountable regardless of our political relationships with the mayor, whoever the mayor is, and pass a budget that is reflective of the values of this body, to propose amendments, whether they pass or not, that are reflective of the things that we're hearing from our constituents. Because one thing is for sure, as I field a lot of calls from people, because I would remind folks that we... These are extraordinary circumstances. We've seen more evictions in the last three years than probably any time in the city's history, if I had to take a guess. And so people are really going through it. And so the ability to know and get resources, legal resources, available to folks to be able to prevent being homeless at a time where wages aren't... No, no state in the city, in this country, do people who make a minimum wage earn enough to buy a home or to pay market-level rents. So regardless if this is a Baltimore thing or anywhere else, people are really struggling right now. And so I believe that this body should be doing everything in our power to prevent homelessness, to keep people in their homes. And I would note that while I wasn't a part of the budget process as much as I usually be due to the birth of my beautiful baby girl at home, I was in the hearings in January. I did raise these exact same concerns about what I was hearing in my community from people saying I didn't know about the eviction, didn't know about the resources. I have a staffer that dedicates a tremendous amount of time to preventing eviction because the resources simply aren't there, so much so that we have nonprofits in this city that are calling my office and referring people from all across the city, not just my district, because we've been so effective. But that's not our job, right? It's not our job. It is the job of the sheriff to make sure that people know what's available. I did introduce legislation a few years back that requires the Sheriff's Office to put those resources on the door as well. I would note that they're not even complying with that. Check the code. It's there. And so I vote yes, because I believe that this is the right thing to do at the right time, and I hope that this is, as we move forward with more power, Mr. President, in the coming year, that more proposals are coming from colleagues about reallocation, because this time next year, this process will look a lot different, and I'm hoping that it is a little more spicy than usual. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Bullock.
Yes.
Porter.
(inaudible).
Costello. Stokes.
I want to explain my vote, Mr. President. About five years ago, I had a piece of resolution, and I did not introduce it during the Catherine Peewe administration, and it was a right for our tenants, when they go to court, they have some representation. I was told by the mayor back then, they didn't have the funding. That particular resolution ended up in then-President Scott's office. I met with multifamily before I even introduced it. For some reason, my resolution got missing and it went somewhere else. That's fine, because we're talking about supporting our tenants. Back then, President Scott introduced it. That was three years ago, and now we hear again talking about, we're going to cut the sheriff budget so we can put it in there for tenants' rights. We should be ashamed of ourselves. We're going to cut law enforcement. They are the lowest-paid law enforcement in the state of Maryland. They have a less budget, they have less staff than the police department. Now, we hear our community protesting about cutting the police budget. We couldn't find nothing in the police budget to cut, which is four or five times higher than the sheriff's? That don't make sense. So I'm going to just give you an example. I have called the Sheriff's Office. When in my district, an eastern district might have 10 police, and my community say they want to see some presence, right? When I called the Sheriff's Office, they was there. The Sheriff's Office helped out at the Orioles game, they helped out at the Ravens game. They have done some things in this city that we don't give them credit for, and then we're going to sit here and say we're going to cut $500,000 out of the sheriff budget, and they already have a shortage of deputies? The eastern district, I already got a call. Do you know the Sheriff's Office already got a call from the Commissioner's Office because they need some assistance right now while we're talking? And we're going to cut a budget out of the Sheriff's Office when we won't talk about how much money that's in the Baltimore City Police Department? Again, I vote no, but we should be ashamed of ourselves.
Glover.
Yes, stand up. Quick with this. You know, like Councilman Torrance, you know, I once was in a situation where I had some homelessness to me as well, but that still doesn't justify the fact that we have a Sheriff's Department that is, I feel, is underfunded. In my community of East Baltimore, I know for sure, they've been very, very accessible to our community when eastern district does not have the police presence that's needed. They're there for us. I don't know if cutting $500,000 is going to actually help individuals out with homelessness and putting out flyers or whatever the heck, you know, this council's that says yes to this bill is referenced to, but I know for sure, they have gone over and beyond in the Sheriff's Department to help out, even when they come to our young people in these neighborhoods. So again, I support... Excuse me, I don't support this bill. I'm voting no against this bill, and I hope that my colleagues, the last colleague, has the opportunity to vote on this bill. has the opportunity to vote on this bill, will also consider that these individuals, again, are the lowest paid in the state of Maryland, and these individuals, the sheriff's department, are out in our communities helping out the Baltimore City Police Department, where I feel maybe have taken, maybe some small cuts to probably help the sheriff's department, which they have not. So again, I do not support this bill.
Ramos.
My vote is yes, and I wanted to explain a couple of things to address some of the issues that my colleagues brought up. I very much respect every single one of them and understand where they're coming from. I just want to clarify a couple of things. First is that this is work that myself and others in the council have done for a long time trying to address evictions. This is consistent. If this came out of the blue, I could understand, but this is very consistent with what we've been doing. And this sends a message that we need to improve the eviction process so that our residents get a fair shot, a fair shot, because the eviction process is actually all about the landlord, and we're trying, we've been trying in this council to make a difference. So this is consistent. My vote is yes.
Thank you. You know, I think that's exactly what we're all here to do, to have spirited, very productive dialogue. You know, clearly, it's almost like an even split, folks on different sides of the aisles. The one thing that I'm going to close out before we close this issue out and move on is that everything everyone said is right. Homelessness is a major problem in the city, and these are the things that the council should be doing to go after it. The problem is when you isolate something like this from a department that this body doesn't even have the power to control as it relates to the rules and regulations in which they operate by, which, a body that sits outside of the city administration, a body that is purely underfunded when you look at it in comparison to the rest of the state, when we decide to isolate that particular body in the year of election, a month out from an election, it seems very political. And that's where my major concern is, because the same way we talk about the issues of homelessness, I know each and every one of us can talk about the issues of mental illness. I know each and every one of us can talk about the issues of substance abuse. I know each and every one of us can talk about the issues of trauma or getting to our children before they get to the criminal justice system. And we talked about it for almost 100 hours throughout this budget process, and this is what we come up with. This is, this council's answer to defunding the police. It's concerning to me. I won't allow it to just rest and just kind of go on. I think that we have to do a better job in the future if we're serious about utilizing the authority and autonomy of this council, that we do it in a way that is equitable throughout city government, not picking on a state agency that the administration does not control in an easy way to get a great headline or social media. And I'm not suggesting that any of you, that that is your motivation, but that will be the byproduct of what we're doing here today. So with that said, thank you, each of you, for your spirited debate and your concerns in providing that. The amendment has been adopted of eight yeses and seven nos. At this point, I would like to call on the chair of the committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably as amended.
It's been moved and probably second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill is approved, and the bill will be printed for third reading. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to invoke City Council Rule 12-1 for same-day advancement from second to third reader.
It's been moved and probably second, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Actually, we will, in order to do that for same day, we have to actually take a roll. So, Ms. Clerk, if you could, please read it.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye.
McCray.
Aye.
Dorsey.
Aye.
Conway.
Aye.
Schleifer.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Torrance.
Aye.
Burnett.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Costello.
Aye.
Stokes.
Glover.
Aye.
Ramos.
The ayes have it, the bill will move on to third reader today. Ms. Clerk, please read in the next bill.
City Council Bill 22-0237, Annual Property Tax, Fiscal Year 2022.
The body would like to recognize the chair of the committee.
Mr. President, I think it was the wrong bill number. 023.
All right, 236.
Oh. 236.
Please read it in again, Mr. Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0236, Annual Property Tax, Fiscal Year 2022.
The body would like to recognize the chair of the committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably.
Is there a second? It's been moved and probably second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed, we will take this up again at our next meeting. Mr. Clerk.
Mayor and City Council Resolution 22-0237, Operating Budget for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2023.
The body would like to recognize chair of the committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. One more point of personal privilege, if I may, I forgot to thank you, and that goes to our budget director, Bob Senneme, who was, has always been phenomenal for us to work with. Bob, thank you for everything throughout the process and being so responsive to us. Mr. President, I move the bill favorably.
It's been moved, it's probably second. It's been moved and probably second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed for third reading. Mr. Chair.
Mr. President, I move to invoke City Council Rule 12-1 for same-day advancement from second to third reader.
Is there a second?
Aye.
At this time, Ms. Clerk, if, it's been moved and probably second, Ms. Clerk, if you could please do the roll.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye.
McCray.
Aye.
Dorsey.
Aye.
Conway.
Aye.
Schleifer.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Torrance.
Aye.
Burnett.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Costello.
Aye.
Stokes.
Aye.
Glover.
Aye.
Ramos.
The ayes have it, this bill will move on to third reading. We turn bills on third reading at this time for final passage. Again, they require the invocation of City Council Rule 12-1, same-day advancement. Ms. Clerk, if you could please read the roll, read the bill and call roll.
22-0235, Ordinance of Estimates for Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2023. President Mosby.
All right. Thank you.
Keep going. Cohen.
Aye.
McCray.
Aye.
Dorsey.
Aye.
Conway.
Aye.
Schleifer.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Torrance.
Aye.
Burnett.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Costello.
Aye.
Stokes.
Aye.
Glover.
Aye.
Ramos.
The ayes have it, this bill will move on to third reading today. Ms. Clerk, please read in the next bill.
City Council Bill 22-0237, Annual Property Tax, Fiscal Year 2022.
The body would like to recognize the chair of the committee.
Mr. President, I think it was the wrong bill number. 023.
All right, 236.
Oh.
You said 7.
236.
Please read it in again, Mr. Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0236, Annual Property Tax, Fiscal Year 2022.
The body would like to recognize the chair of the committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably.
Is there a second? It's been moved and probably second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed, we will take this up again at our next meeting. Mr. Clerk.
Mayor and City Council Resolution 22-0237, Operating Budget for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2023. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill is approved. Members, thank you again for your work throughout this process. The next step is the board of estimates. We will meet shortly to certify the real and personal property tax rates for fiscal year 2023. After that, we will reconvene to pass the tax rate ordinance. Chairs and members, in the interest of completing our work here today as quickly as possible, I would request that we hold any committee and personal announcements until our next meeting later this afternoon. At this point, I would like to recognize our vice president, Vice President Sharon Green Middleton. The floor is yours.
The next meeting of the City Council will be held at 3:30. Thank you.
This concludes our meeting. Thank you, Madam Vice President. The special meeting of the 73rd term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. As a reminder for members, press, and members of the public in attendance, we ask everyone to wear masks while in council chambers. Please also take the opportunity to turn off any electronic devices like cell phones. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the free republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, for the free and justice of the law.
Ms. Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
Mr. President, we have a quorum. Thank you, Ms. Clerk. Now on to bills that are on third reading for final passage. Ms. Clerk, please read in the first bill.
City Council Bill 22-0236, Annual Property Tax, Fiscal Year 2023. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
Just to explain to the general public, this committee did cuts about $700,000 from the mayor's budget. It's such a miniscule amount, the property tax is not really going to get lowered by much, so the strategy is not to lower the property tax by the less than a cent that would, it would have resulted in. So we're, we've just passed the original amount that was set through statute that was a part of the original package, so for everybody's knowledge and edification. This bill is approved. At this point, we're going to go to committee announcements. At this time, I would like to call on the Chair of Economic Community Development, Vice President Sharon Green Middleton.
No committee announcements.
Thank you, Madam VP. Next up, Education, Workforce, and the Youth, Chairman Stokes.
No announcements, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, Health, Environment, and Technology. Thank you, Chairwoman McCray. Next up, Public Safety Government Operations. Thank you, Chairman. And then, next up, Rules and Legislative Oversight. Thank you, Chairman Schleifer. And then last but certainly not least, Ways and Means. Please, no, no announcements. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We move now to regular announcements. Members, please wait till be recognized for any regular announcements. At this time, are there any regular announcements for members of this body? I see the hand raised of Chairman Schleifer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. So as we heard today right before, one of the hearings that we did, the finance director, Henry Raymond, lost his father, and so I want to ask for a moment of silence for him. I do not have his name, but if we can do that at the end of this meeting, thank you.
Thank you for providing that information to the body. Are there any additional announcements? Hearing and seeing none, at this time, I'd like to recognize Vice President Sharon Green Middleton.
The next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, June 27, 2022, at 5:00 PM, and may we have a moment of silence for the father of, and the family of Henry Raymond, our finance director.
There be no new business before the test. This concludes the special meeting of the 73rd term of your Baltimore City Council. Baltimore, we love you.[1790.82]